Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Smithtown Plan and Board is now in session. Adam, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Planning Department would like to request that the following items beginning of the agenda noted with an asterisk be adjourned insofar as we have insufficient information to act on these cases this evening. This is under Part 1 of the Adjourned Matters under Zone Change Applications, Line 1, Case Number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Line 2, Case Number 2011-10, Anthony Luteri. Line 3, Case Number 2009-05, FB4 Realty LLC and GMF Realty LLC. Under waiver requests, Line 4, Case Number 1066, Greenbelt Estates, a request for waiver of sidewalks. Line 5, Case Number 1059, Prestige Estates, also a waiver of sidewalks. Line 6, Case Number 1000A, Soundview Estates, a waiver of sidewalk trees and boundary fencing. Line 7, Case Number 773, Scholar Estates, and that has to do with a increasing of density in Case Number, on Line 8, Number 922, Sesame Estates in Kings Park, that's also a question of density. Under the Performance Bond Extensions, Line 9, Case Number 288, Olivia Estates under Birch Road, and Letter of Interpretation under Line 10 for Polish National Church. For closed hearings, we have Case Number on Line 11, Case Number 2010-06, KVC Holdings, MLC Holdings, and DWC Management. Line 12, 1053, Burgess Estates in Kings Park, an amendment to change the conditions of a conservation easement. Line 13, Case Number 911A, Glen Hill Northern in St. James. Mr. Chairman, those are the requests for adjournments this evening.
Is there anybody here to, on those items to be adjourned that wants to be heard? Hearing none, emotion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, if we could return now to Part 3, our new hearings this evening. The first item is a performance bond extension, Line 14, Case Number 1046. Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, this is a case which the board has spent some time on. This is the case over in Comac with the partially completed subdivision off of Borwood. We discussed this at the last meeting, and we believe that the recommendation for the resolution is consistent with what the board directed us to do. This is located on Page 2 of that memorandum, and it reads as follows. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Bel Air Estates from December 22, 2011, to June 1, 2012, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall complete all public improvements as detailed in the Highway Department's memorandum of January 26, 2012. Two, prior to June 1, 2012, the applicant should contact the Highway and Engineering Department to discuss the remaining public improvements to be completed within this subdivision. Three, upon completion of the outlined public improvements, and after discussions with the Highway and Engineering Departments regarding the remaining outstanding public improvements, the applicant may submit a performance bond extension application requesting additional time to complete said items. Four, should the applicant not complete the public improvements as outlined in the Highway Department's memorandum by June 1, 2012, no further extensions will be granted by the Planning Board, and the town attorney will commence default proceedings against the applicant's posted performance bond. Mr. Chairman, I believe that is consistent with the board discussed at the last meeting.
Is there anybody here representing the applicant? Was this supposed to track, or didn't have to be?
We have someone here.
Oh, here he is, okay.
Okay.
Give your name and address, please.
My name is Angelo Pirone, 746 Amstertown Park, Franklin Square.
Okay, how have you?
Okay.
Have you made any progress with your?
Yes, I am. I got everything set up, but we started Monday to do the improvement and the some. I got the excavator, and also the concrete guy is starting to do the curbs. So we're starting from there, then we're going to go into the some, we're going to do the, you know, the fence and everything else has got to be done. So we started there Monday, that I got everything set up.
Okay. You understand there the conditions that we've, that's been set down, that by June the 1st, we expect that to be done?
I'm working on it, yes.
Okay.
Well, the only thing I would add to this is that we extended you to June 1 based on your recommendation and your representation to us that this stuff would be done by that time, okay? That was at your request.
Right.
So, I don't know if it's necessary to amend the resolution, but I want that to be clear. You wanted 30 more days, the Planning Department wanted us to go 30 less days, but we granted you that accommodation, and we expect it to be done by that time.
That's why I'm working on it.
Okay.
I'm starting Monday.
But you understand what's going to happen if you don't have it done by June the 1st?
I understand that.
Okay.
So I'm going to start working on Monday on it.
Okay. Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to speak on this, concerning this application? Hearing none. A motion there to approve the performance bond to an extension there of June the 1st, 2012, with the conditions there that are included.
In the matter of Bel Air Estates, Number 1046, motion to adopt the resolution thereby approving a retroactive extension of the performance bond to June 1, 2012, subject to the conditions stated by the Planning Department.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Okay. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move on now to a waiver request under Line 15, Case Number 1107, SEJ Estates in St. James. This is a request for a waiver of sidewalks. This was discussed at a previous meeting, and we had requested the board do an onsite. We believe that the following resolution is consistent with the board's inspection, which is located on Page 1 of the memorandum. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Joseph Millie of SEJ Estates to waive the requirement to install 232 feet of linear sidewalks along Heidi Court South within the subdivision known as SEJ Estates, Case Number 11-07.
Is there anybody here representing the applicant? Was this, it had been posted, I know, once.
No, it was posted at the original meeting, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions by the board? Hearing none, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
What? Does anybody else want to speak on this, on this application? No, here now, go ahead, the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regards to SBJ Estates, Number 11-07, that we adopt the resolution as read by the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move on now to the second waiver request this evening, Line 16, Case Number 1137, Stanton Plant in St. James. containing our comments regarding Stanton Platt, a waiver request. The applicant requested a waiver to the requirements of posting a performance bond for the subdivision known as Stanton Platt, Case Number 1137. The map of Stanton Platt was granted conditional final approval from the board on May 4, 2011. The applicant was approved for a two-lot subdivision on a .9255 acre parcel located in the southern terminus of O'Shea Lane and the western terminus of James, plural, in St. James in the R10S zoning district. At that time, the board approved a performance bond estimate for the required public improvements in the amount of $6,700. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the requirements to post a performance bond and have a future bond be posted where a building permit is requested. Since the map of Stanton Platt had not been filed, the Planning Department Director in a memorandum dated December 15, 2011 requested an opinion from the town attorney regarding the issue of waiving a performance bond for an approved subdivision. As part of the subdivision regulations, a map cannot be filed until the town board accepts a performance bond. The town attorney issued an opinion in a memorandum dated January 24, 2012, a copy is attached. The opinion states that pursuant to Section 277 of Town Law, "Once a planning board has determined that the installation of improvements in infrastructures are necessary, an applicant may post a performance bond sufficient to cover the cost of improvements in lieu of completing the public improvements." Further, in Christie versus Venetia Water District, it was held that "once a town determines that a particular improvement is necessary, it may not waive the requirement that the owner either install or improve the improvement or post the bond. Therefore, the required public improvements may not be waived once they are determined to be necessary. In reviewing the matter with the town attorney, it was clear that the planning board determines the required public improvements and related actions. Further, the planning board also has the authority to modify those requirements if they believe they are no longer necessary. However, the planning board may not direct that a bond be submitted after a subdivision has been completed and accepted by the town. Insofar as there are bonded items within the subdivision, the Planning Department does not recommend that the bond be waived. However, the board may consider a reduction if the applicant can demonstrate that a specific set of items are not necessary. Our recommendation is, absent an argument to reduce the performance bond, the Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Donald Stanton to waive the requirements of posting a performance bond for the subdivision known as Stanton Platt, Case Number 1137." Mr. Chairman, that completes our recommendation.
Who's representing the applicant?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Vincent J. Tramarko, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. As the board might know, this got a long history, this matter before this board ultimately bought, the board did grant the subdivision map. This letter from the town attorney is in your possession. It wasn't given to my client. Again, I don't know if it's one of those secret letters or not, but you have it, I would like to have it. But in addition, and probably more importantly in this case, the client, Mr. Stanton, made an agreement with Glenn Jorgensen, the Highway Superintendent, to pay to Glenn Jorgensen those amounts which are indicated on the performance bond with respect to curbing, with respect to concrete driveway apron, with respect to type B asphalt patching. Approximately $26 or $2700 would be paid to Mr. Jorgensen, and he has agreed to perform that work. The only other thing that I see on this bond is a requirement for the monuments being in place, and I have a letter from Bob Maverkakis, the surveyor, certifying that the monuments are in place. So I believe that with respect to monuments, we don't have to post anything because they're already there. Finally, I think there is one street tree that's required. The place is heavily wooded on that portion on St. James Place. I guess if the board wants to take the time to take a look at it and tell us whether that one street tree is required, which generally that's what you do, you have an onsite, we don't have an objection to that. So I don't know what else is left, assuming that we do make, we have in principle made this agreement with Glenn Jorgensen, although it hasn't been committed to writing at this point. I believe that he will still honor that agreement. So if we take that as being true, then I don't know what else there is that my client would have to do to finalize this matter. And I think when I talked to Frank a few minutes ago before you started, he indicated there might be something else, but I don't see it on a performance bond. Maybe I didn't look at the second page, nope, there's nothing on the second page, so I think we're good if the board accepts the fact that Jorgensen is going to do it.
Has Mr. Jorgensen sent a letter to Frank, or is there anybody there that he's going to do that?
I believe what happened is that Mr. Jorgensen, my clients were at the site, and he did speak to Frank on the telephone, and he indicated that he would be happy to take the money since my client doesn't plan to improve the property with a dwelling. He did have plans to do that a few years ago, but since it took so long to get this map approved, including the litigation, he was going to build a house for his daughter, but she's found another place to go, so he just wants to leave it vacant for a while. So I think we've covered everything, and I think it's probably a good route to go. Mr. Jorgensen will have the money, he'll put it in escrow accounts specifically allocated to Stanton Platt, and when the time comes, he will do the work.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond. I did speak with Mr. Tramarko, and I spoke with the client, or Blaze spoke with the client earlier. The Planning Department normally, if they enter into a contract with the Highway Department, we will generally accept that as a project that has been completed, and we feel that that's grounds for the board to consider a reduction in the performance bond once that has been received. We haven't received that yet, but I have no, Mr. Jorgensen did indicate to me that he would be in agreement to do some of this work, but we don't know to what extent. I believe it was only about $2,500, though.
But the bond could be reduced, not waived.
That's correct.
According to what we have in front of us, we don't have the authority to waive it under these circumstances.
Well, the board has the authority to reduce the amount of the performance bonds.
Reduce?
But to waive the performance bond, I think, is another issue altogether.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think, well, based on what we have, it's questionable whether we have the authority to do it.
Counsel, do you agree there with the terms there of the outline from the county attorney, from the town attorney?
I do. I mean, with reference to the items that Mr. Tramarko presents, I think one of the items should be submitted regarding the monument should be an affidavit, or an affidavit from Mr. Maverkakis stating that he has installed the monuments and it is required by whatever code is relevant, and submit that. That would address the issue concerning the monuments. As far as the curbing, I think there would have to be an agreement with the Highway Department that it was, that had been agreed to, and that payment has been made. That would just provide for a reduction. You're still going to be left with an inconsequential balance, but nevertheless, a performance bond.
Well, I don't know what's left.
It has to be kind of written agreement, I would imagine, between the applicant and the Highway Superintendent.
There's a, there's normally a contract.
Right.
So we wait.
But we're not there yet.
That's correct.
So if we get this contract, we can reduce, in our discretion, we can reduce this bond to a dollar?
Well, no, you have other items that are here.
He's saying there are no other items.
Well, I, the bond is $6,700, and from what I understand, and this is what we'll see in the contract, is that the Highway said that they will agree to do about $2,500 of it. I'm not sure exactly what the exact figure is, but whatever is remaining, I noted that there's an erosion control plan that's $1,200 here. I think that's still applicable.
So we need to get this contract before we do anything?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have an unexecuted contract from, which was faxed from the Highway Department to my client. The amount is $2,600, and I think it covers most, if not all, of the items. So, do you have another copy of this? Give this in, too.
Mr. Tramarko, why don't we wait to get, if you're going to do that, why don't we get a signed contract with the Highway Superintendent? This way, we know, we bring back documents that are certain.
Or it also could be, wording could be changed between now and the time it's signed?
That's a better idea. That's a better idea.
But the, all this, all that's going to do is just waive those amounts, it's not going to waive the whole performance bond.
That's correct. This board, however, he did establish that there are other things that he has done, and the board may take that into consideration. In other words, like for the example, if he has installed the monuments, and the board feels that it's not necessary to bond for the monuments, although I will contact, when I see the certification, I, those are usually engineering's determination, I'll happily convey that to the board with engineering feels about that.
I would like, before this comes back, I would like you two to agree on what's been done and what hasn't been done. Because it's either something's been done or it hasn't been done.
The waiver request that is before us was to waive the entire performance bond. I had spoken to the applicant, and I had agreed that if we have a contract with the Highway Superintendent, that I would believe that that would be grounds for the board to consider reduction of the performance bond. I was not prepared to have the entire performance bond waived.
All right, so Frank, it's possible that maybe the suggestion could be carried through that both parties could review a punch list, exactly what's going to be done and agreed to by Highway, and then we could review this again, we could adjourn this again for our next meeting? You think that gives everyone enough time to get this list together?
I certainly will.
I do, yes. I mean, it's all on the performance bond, it's easy.
Does the board have any opinion on that, or?
Well, if they've been speaking, and they're talking about going down this road with this contract with the Highway Superintendent, it has to be adjourned because we have no contract with the Highway Superintendent.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, we could adjourn it, and then we could take it up at the next meeting, and we could see if the punch list has been satisfied, what's not going to be done, and then we could review this whole resolution.
As I understand it, so far, there's around $2,600. Is that what you're saying? It been agreed to?
Yes, that's what seems to be in this proposal.
So what's the remainder, between $2,600 and $6,300, Frank?
Well, it appears, this is one thing I have to see what the Highway Department is going to do. So we're guessing now what elements that are doing. I'm only going on the verbal description, but if I'm looking here at the, what's down here is we have, the largest expense I could see is erosion control plan, that's $1,200. There's some basins, I don't know if that's covered in terms of what's being done here. You have the street trees, I don't know if he's doing the driveway aprons, I would have to see, but there's supposedly 67, this total $6,700, I would have to see what's remaining.
All right, so why don't we see what's going to get done, compare the list, and we'll take this up at the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, one thing I'd like to mention, and I have to do it because it's bothering me, I'd like a copy of that letter from the town attorney, and it's very interesting that probably less than six months ago, this board allowed another client of mine, Johnson Platt, to put the remainder of the bonding amounts as a covenant and restriction on the property, so when a developer came in, or a builder, or an owner of the property wanted to develop it, they couldn't do it unless they did X, Y, and Z. That was the map of Johnson Platt. That was done afterwards. Frank indicates to me, he then gets an opinion from the town attorney after Johnson, and now Johnson is no longer legal, according to the town attorney, but it was legal before because you didn't have an opinion from the town attorney. So I'm a little confused, but that's okay.
Mr. Tramarko, as part of our conversation, and I mentioned this to you, there's a little bit difference between Johnson and this particular case. That was a filed map, and that was after the map was filed, and there was a punch list, if you do recall, of minimum requirements that the Engineering Department requested to be done before they would sign off on the performance bond. That was one thing. This is a map that has not even been filed yet. So the, a map cannot be filed until the town board accepts a performance bond. That's in the law. And what I was asking the town attorney was, can we do this without a filed map? It was a difference after the map was filed, so this was a different question. I was surprised when the town attorney came back and told me, I can't even post a future bond. That was not the question that I asked the town attorney, I was asking him specifically whether or not, how we would do this, because I can't conceive of how the chairman could sign the bond without the town board accepting a performance bond. That was the question that was asked.
That's fine. I don't have the letter, so I can't even send cases.
I will happily give you my letter, which is not, you know, which I requested, so you could see what was the matter. I have no problems with that. I can't give you the town attorney.
What about the letter from John Solo, which is in the board's file? Is that the same deal that I have with the last few cases, that I can't look at it?
Well, what we've done here is, the town attorney is Frank's attorney, okay? Our attorney is Mr. Shul. So we would like there a confirmation from Mr. Shul that everything that's being quoted there from the town attorney, he agrees to, and then, if you need a letter to that effect, it's in the minutes, and you can go ahead there and do something there to get the letter. But what, the problem I have with this application is, and it's not the same as Johnson's, I agree, we went through a big session there to get to where we are today with this application. There was a lot of dispute about boundary lines and everything else. And what I don't, I know that there's at least three people that border onto Mr. Stanton's property on the west side, and that was where some of the dispute was. Now, I know that that was settled in court, I think, but what I want to make sure is that if he's not going to develop this himself, and he's going to maybe sell it to somebody, that somebody knows that what the history is of this, and if there's going to be a covenant, okay, a covenant, if that's agreeable to you and the client.
I don't have a problem with a covenant. The only thing I have a problem with is, again, you have a letter from the town attorney, which is part of the record in your file, and I can't look at it. Doesn't make sense to me, Mr. Tramarko.
Well, there's a, I agree there. I'm not happy with the way that that's done there, but that's neither here nor there. That's the letter that we have, and that's the one, the letter that we're acting on, is that letter that stated that the law is, whatever the minutes there indicated, or whatever the proposal indicated, that it refers there to Section 277 of the law, and gives further clarification there of case history there with Christie versus Venetia Water District. And I'm sure that you can- And I'm sure that you can look that up and get any kind of information you want out of that, there for your client. But it's two different cases. The Johnson case and this case are two different cases. I am always been concerned, from the very beginning, about the boundary lines of the property because of the dispute. Oh, listen, I know that you went to court with it.
That's the end of it, Mr. G. We can't be concerned about it anymore.
It may be the end of it—it may be the end of it until somebody tries to develop this. I don't know.
Well, okay.
Now, let me find out first, say, if there's anybody here that wants to speak on this. Is there anybody who wants to speak on this application? Okay. Now, members of the Board, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I—I'd like to make a recommendation that we adjourn this matter pending the conditions that we discussed regarding a—a contract and any potential punch list as to what Mr. Stanton will be doing, and what is agreeable to the Highway Department, and what's going to be left over, so we could look at this matter at the earliest date possible. Can we put this—basically, can we say that it's going to be on the calendar for next meeting?
I'm assuming that, yes, we will do our best to do it.
All right. Well, in—in a very long, drawn-out motion, that—that could be something of my motion regarding Stanton Platt, number 1137. That is adjourned pending the issues we just discussed.
Acceptable of you to, Mr. Jamarco?
Yes.
I second his motion.
Second a motion? Seconded—a motion to adjourn this for further consideration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
I'd like to move on now to a final subdivision this evening, line seventeen, case number 1,143, Gemini Landing in Fort Solanga.
Want to take a look at this? There it is, the stamp. Want to show that here, Adam?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'd like to draw your attention to a memorandum in your packet dated today's date, March 21, 2012, regarding the map of Gemini Landing, case number 1,143. The applicant requests final approval to subdivide 2.52 acre parcel into two single-family lots. The application was originally submitted to the Planning Department on August 5, 2009, for a two-lot subdivision that has an existing driveway access on Meadow Glen Road in Fort Solanga. Instead of using this access, the applicant mapped the proposed access to the subdivision from Berry Hill cul-de-sac approximately 250 feet northeast of the subject property. At that time, the Planning Department made a recommendation to the applicant to revise the map indicating access to the proposed subdivision using the existing driveway access off of Meadow Glen Road. The applicant resubmitted the application on March 16, 2010, depicting the same access point onto Berry Hill Drive. Planning informed the applicant that they were not in favor of creating access from Berry Hill Drive for this subdivision, as the applicant already has access from Meadow Glen Road, and that a substantial amount of disturbance in the form of regressing, tree removal, and retaining wall construction would be required to create access to Berry Hill. Additionally, the proposed access would be running between two existing homes and the cul-de-sac that currently enjoy an open landscaped space in that area. The proposed map was distributed to the Engineering, Environmental, Highway, and Traffic Safety Departments for review. All members of the Board have made visits to the site. The current access to the subject site is via an asphalt driveway which crosses the tax lot known as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 11-7-28.13. That is owned by the applicants of Dolan Platt. That's a subdivision number 876, a two-lot subdivision that was approved by the Board in 1994. This driveway was constructed to provide access to the home of Mrs. Betty Bogie, the original owner of Lot 28.13 in the subject site. Mrs. Bogie and the owners of the Gemini property drafted a cross-access agreement for this— for this purpose at thi—this time. In the 1990s, Mrs. Bogie's property was sold to a developer who built the subdivision known as Berry Hill at Fort Solanga, case number 903, approved by the Board in 1996. This subdivision is immediately to the northeast of Gemini and fronts on Wood Hollow Road and the cul-de-sac known as Berry Hill Drive. During the review process of Dolan Platt and Berry Hill, the town wanted to connect the Berry Hill cul-de-sac to Meadow Glen Road by using Lot 28.13. After both the subdivisions had been approved, the Town Engineering Department recommended that Berry Hill Drive remain as a cul-de-sac due to topographical issues at the Berry Hill end. In approving the map of Berry Hill, the Planning Board conditioned that Lot 28.13 should be transferred to the Dolans to provide access to their existing subdivision and for future subdivisions. The applicant—the Planning Department and the Planning Board discussed the issue of access to this proposed subdivision at three Planning Board meetings under Other Matters. Those meetings were held on November 17, 2010, April 6, 2011, and July 6, 2011. The applicant raised a concern that the existing easement on the property might not permit access for a second home. Counsel to the Planning Board reviewed the easement agreement and concluded that there was no restrictions on the number of homes that can use the easement. The applicant stated that referred access to the proposed subdivision be from Berry Hill Drive, not Meadow Glen Road. At another meeting, the Dolans who owned the right-of-way spoke before the Board and indicated that they also wanted to further subdivide their property, and appeared willing to work with the owners of Gemini Landing to include a private road connecting to Meadow Road. Subsequently, the applicant requested that the Planning Board schedule a public hearing on the proposed subdivision based on the plans submitted on March 16, 2010, with no changes to the proposed access onto Berry Hill Drive. Comments have been received from the Highway Engineering Departments indicating that a preference for access to be located on Meadow Glen Road. Traffic Safety stated they had no objections. The Planning Department recommends denial of this application as depicted on the proposed subdivision map. The applicant can use Meadow Glen Road access to the subject site for the proposed home. Our recommendation, the Planning Department offers the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Gordon Ostojic to subdivide Suffolk County Tax Map Number 11-7-3 as depicted on the maps prepared by Tremaine Easton Land Surveyor for the subdivision map known as Map of Gemini Landing, case number 1,143, for the following reasons. One, there is a practical and feasible alternative design that would be less destructive of the environment. Two, there is a practical and feasible alternative design that would prevent the adjacent property to also be subdivided. That's Suffolk County Tax Map Number 11-7-1.3. Three, the alternative designs noted in points one and two is consistent with the design objectives of the subdivision regulations that recommend designs that minimize regressing, that are consistent with having a minimal impact upon the environment, and that are useful for future development. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our recommendation on Gemini Landing.
Good evening. Would you give your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Gordon Ostojic. I reside at 43 Meadow Glen Road, Fort Solanga, New York. O-S-T-O-J-I-C. Gordon, first name.
All right. And yours, sir?
My name is Michael Moibillo. I'm an architect. I have a practice-inspired design group located at 1650 Sycamore Avenue in Bohemian, New York. I'm here tonight representing the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of Board, thank you very much for reviewing this case this evening, and I'm just going to take a few moments to—to go over the—the history, describe the application, and discuss the history of this application. First, the application before you this evening is for a two-lot split with a shared driveway access to the Berry Hill cul-de-sac. We are proposing to abandon the access to the current driveway, which is presently traversing a private easement to Meadow Glen Road. The applicant's existing residence, which is at the—this—on the south side of the property, faces towards Berry Hill Road, and to the rear of his house is a development which fronts Meadow Glen Road. So his—his property, as you could see on the—on the subdivision map, to the—to the west is Meadow Glen Road, to the east is the Berry Hill right-of-way and cul-de-sac. His property is presently separated by another property to the west. The—the proposed residence—that—you know, the residence that we're proposing in the second lot will also face Berry Hill Drive. Both houses will share a sixteen-foot-wide private driveway, which would be constructed over the Berry Hill ri—right-of-way. The property—my—Mr. Ostojic's property presently has fifty-foot-wide frontage on the Berry Hill right-of-way. As Mr. Derubis was going over some of the history, this area has seen many subdivisions over the years. Most recently was—in this immediate area was the 1995 Berry Hill subdivision to the east, which yielded ten lots, and the 1994 Dolan subdivision to the north—to the north, which yielded two lots. At the time of the—of the Berry Hill application, my client had access to a private driveway that ran from Meadow Glen Road to Wood Hollow Lane. After the Berry Hill subdivision was approved, my client lost access to Wood Hollow Lane and gained a fifty-foot frontage to the newly-created Berry Hill right-of-way. It had originally been planned that a roadway be constructed running out to Meadow Glen in conformings—in conformance to the Planning Board adopted roadway plan of 1992. Originally, a cul-de-sac had been planned at the edge of my client's property, as illustrated in a map—a preliminary map for the Berry Hill subdivision, which I'm going to submit The map that I presented to you is—was a preliminary map, which was discussed over the course of three Planning Board meetings, or in review with the Planning Department. The—the map shows that originally a cul-de-sac had been planned at the edge of my client's property, and—but due to the—the top—the topography in the area, that cul-de-sac was going to be too disruptive, and it would have affected the topography too much. And on the—on the minutes that I've handed in, which I'd—I'd asked the Board that the minutes from the April 5, 1995 Berry Hill subdivision hearing be incorporated into this record. In that, I have the area highlighted where it says—it states the issue regarding the turnaround for plows. It says that the—the slope of approximately 4.5 percent. The Highway Department feels that the cul-de-sac at the bottom of the hill, the turnaround —it—they must go through a turnaround, and a snowplow must come back at the hill. It's very, very difficult. So the—the top—the topography issue that Mr. Derubis talks about in his—that I believe he's referring to, and we can—we can speak to him after about this, related to topography issues in the area, do not have to do with the topography of traversing to my client's property, was topography issues related to creating, you know, a—a—a large cul-de-sac. Ultimately, what they decided to do was to minimize the impact on the topography and the disruption of the area, they—they proposed a temporary cul-de-sac further to the northeast on Berry Hill. The—the temporary easement was designed to be removed at a later date if a road was to be constructed out to Meadow Glen. This is evident by the—the notch design into the end of the cul-de-sac for connection for a future road. A recharge basin access was also proposed on this time, and I'm going to now submit the final as-built or the final—filed map that—for the Berry Hill subdivision. So this is ultimately where the cul-de-sac wound up that we're now requesting to access I'm sorry, I referred to as an as-built. It's—a—this was the—the final filed map, which is—is indicating where the present cul-de-sac exists, which is noted as a temporary easement. The area that's been highlighted shows that there is—a—there was an access to be improved to—to the requirements of the town engineer, should they—should they need access to the—the recharge basin that's there. So presently, Mr. Derubis can clarify this also. It's my understanding that the Engineering Department or Highway Department, if they need access, can clear out that—that right-of-way at any time. There was—there was also discussion at those hearings about what should be done with the fifty-foot-wide strip of land that connected the Berry Hill right-of-way to the east, to Meadow Glen to the west, and should it belong to the town, or should it be deeded to an adjacent owner? At the second of these three hearings, Mr. Derubis noted that this could be a problem Mr. Chairman, I'm submitting copies of minutes, pages 28 and 29, from the September 6, 1995 public hearing on the Berry Hill at Fort Solanga subdivision. Note the—the highlighted area, Mr. Derubis states, or as it was recorded. So in other words, if the developer decides to deed this property to, let's just say, one owner, that one owner is going to be controlling all of the potential development in this particular area for these other lots. So it's not just a simple issue. This is the cr— This is the crux of the problem that we now have with the way that the Planning Department wants us to develop this property, and I'm going to expand on this a little bit further. First, I would like to address the letter that was just read by Mr. Derubies and the Planning Department's recommendations. First off, we respectfully disagree with all the recommendations that Mr. Derubies has made. First, he, in the letter, they're stating that there will be a substantial amount of disturbance in the form of regrading, tree removal, and retaining wall construction. First off, this application has no retaining walls in it, all the property is being regraded according to town standards. Secondly, the tree removal that we're proposing is less substantial than the proposal or the manner in which the Planning Department wants us to improve this property. We are proposing to have no more than two trees removed from the current Berry Hill right-of-way. Again, as I mentioned before, these are trees that the Highway Department, I believe, and Mr. Derubies can confirm, has the authority to go in and clear at any time in order to gain better access to the recharge basin. Regrading of this area is consistent with town planning standards. The steepest grade for this driveway will be 7.8 percent, for the most part, it'll be under 2 percent. The area that's going to be disrupted, that I believe is referenced in this area, also it discusses the two adjacent homeowners. And the, I, it's my opinion, I'm going to submit some pictures to show how minimal the disruption will be. What we're proposing is basically a third driveway at the end of this cul-de-sac, and I'm going to submit some pictures of what this driveway would look like, I'm going to show what it looks like right now. And the pictures are going to illustrate the minimal disruption, we're basically recessing a driveway into a current berm, and the driveway would go through what's presently a 75-foot long clear area, and disappearing into the woods. So I'd like to submit those pictures at this time. The request that we, that we're putting forward to add this driveway into the cul-de-sac conforms with town, the town standards, as far as the number of driveways on a cul-de-sac, we're not overloading a cul-de-sac. Also, the application that's here today, where, again, we're talking about clearing two trees in a right-of-way, we're talking about some minor grading changes adjacent to the cul-de-sac. Mr. Osajic, when he purchased his property, before the Berry Hill subdivision was started construction, he enjoyed what was probably several hundred, or well over 1,000 trees that were in the area, or thousands of trees. At the time of the Berry Hill subdivision, those trees were bulldozed, they were removed. I understand the Planning Department made every effort to maintain those trees, but, you know, he was certainly quite surprised with how it looked, there was certainly erosion that occurred at the time, and, you know, runoff came towards his property, those matters were addressed during construction, but there was disturbance. When he came in and moved into that house, he saw a forest, and, you know, one day the bulldozers came in, and they started clearing out all the trees, and what was presently his nice peaceful part of the area, an area that he traversed to get out to Wood Hollow Lane, was now cleared. You know, Mr. Osajic works in the construction industry, he knows that this is what happens in development, that properties get cleared and parcels get developed, and he certainly, you know, he tolerated it, he didn't have any choice, it was an approved plan by the town. And all that he's asking for is, basically, is the same right to do what those people had done. He's not looking to do anything that's going to disrupt how they're living, he's not looking to clear an excessive amount of trees relative to his application. One of the things that also that is, not shown on the map, but something that we think we'd like to add to the application, should you deem, you look favorable on it, which the Engineering Department has not commented on, is the introduction of an apron at the end of his driveway. Right now, they're looking at a private driveway, they haven't approved us to do an apron, but we'd like, the other neighbors have a brick apron at the end of their driveways. The neighbor directly to the north has a driveway which is about 135 feet long, we're proposing a driveway from the cul-de-sac to the edge of Mr. Osajic's frontage, his 50-foot frontage, about 220 feet. We believe that our application is consistent with the standards, and that it is, it's more consistent than the design that's in front of you from the Planning Department. We believe that it's primarily, one of the points just to discuss, we feel that it's sound planning principle that, when you're creating a subdivision, that that parcel should have direct access to a right-of-way. It shouldn't be recommended that you cross 600 feet of private land to get out to a main road. I think that most cases, on any application that's coming before you, if you had the choice between accessing a public right-of-way versus going across a private easement, the Planning Department would recommend access to a private, to a public right-of-way. I understand the concerns about disrupting the neighborhood, but clearly, this is not going to disrupt the neighborhood. This leads me into the next part of my presentation, which is to discuss the design that the Planning Department has presented. So I'm going to hand in some copies of the map that are there with some comments on it. I'm going to move counterclockwise, excuse me, from the upper left-hand corner with the comments that are on the plan in front of you. First, I'd like to submit some pictures of the additional trees that the Planning Department hasn't considered at this point, that are going to be, are going to need to be removed with their proposal. What's illustrated in those pictures is that Mr. Derubies' proposal for a 16-foot wide driveway serving five homes, will have to clear additional trees along the existing eight-foot wide driveway, so we're going to be adding 14 feet to the width. The Engineering Department has first said that his proposal is unacceptable for a 16-foot wide driveway, it would need to be 20 feet wide, and it would need to have a turnaround at the end. Secondly, there's been a lot of talk, or it's mentioned actually in Mr. Derubies' letter and recommendations, number two, that there is a practical and feasible alternative design that would permit the adjacent property to also be subdivided. If this board chooses to approve this application for this two-lot split with a driveway from Berry Hill, the property to the north would still be able to develop their property. Right now, they are, they've been approved for a two-lot subdivision. They have the land to possibly go for a three-lot subdivision. Approval of our application would not preclude the development of their property, they would still be able to, they were given this 50-foot wide strip of land to better improve their future development.
Excuse me?
Yes?
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
This seems like the same presentation-
Yeah.
-that we had.
Yeah, this wasn't on, the other one wasn't on the record, and it is different, it is different.
But I believe we did have one on the record.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything new that you want to add?
That application, yeah, okay.
I mean, if you could, because we already get, we already had this process.
No, we didn't have this process, it was on Other Matters, it was not before the public.
Go ahead, finish your presentation.
Thank you. Speaking about that last presentation from Other Matters, from November 17, 2010, Mr. Derubies had stated that the right-of-way, well, the right-of-way, the strip of land was given to the Dolans because they were going to need it for their subdivision of this particular area, not ours. So as I was saying, that the proposal that the Planning Department has for, first off, this plan, this app, this design that the Planning Department has put together has not been before this board, so I'd like to discuss it at this time. The future subdivision of the Dolan property, the Dolans' property, would not be hindered by our application. Secondly, if we separated the applications, we'd have less of an impact with our proposal because we wouldn't be proposing a 20-foot wide road to head, to access all the properties. We'd have a 200-foot driveway on one side, accessing Berry Hill for our two lots, and then there would be a shortened driveway accessing the Dolans' property. Next, the configuration, our design has come together because we feel this is the best configuration for the topography and for the land. So we've, we have a house that's facing Berry Hill and a driveway facing Berry Hill. Mr. Derubies' plans has a house that's turned sideways to a driveway not facing it, and creates an awkward yard configuration. Primarily, the problem with his application is he hasn't looked into the topography on the property, which we've analyzed. The Planning Department is proposing, is proposing that we use what's presently a one-way driveway, you can only go downhill on it. There's a 20 percent slope on it, at one part, a short part of it, and the rest exceeds 13 percent. They're looking to have us utilize that driveway, and in fact, alter it, taking out several more trees. In fact, the Department of Environmental Protection has made comments on this, and recommends that we, that the driveway remain as it is, which is more consistent with our application. These are comments on Mr. Derubies' proposal, that the existing looped driveway, the remnants of it stay in place. It is virtually impossible for us to have access up an eight-foot wide driveway, as proposed here, the grades are too steep, they're not manageable, the only access is towards the Berry Hill side of the property. So this is not a feasible alternative. Apologies also, I'm going to just hand in some additional pieces of paper, these are the engineering comments that state that a 20-foot driveway be proposed and a turnaround at the end of that driveway, which Mr. Derubies does not show on his plan. I think the two main problems that, and one I will reiterate, is the problem with these easements. And, you know, this property is controlled entirely by the Dolans, and at a, you know, previous meeting at Other Matters, the chairman, Mr. G, stated how there are problems with these easements, as far as getting people to come into agreement to do it. And that's really the crux and the problem with this application, is that if the board denies this application, they're basically saying to us that we're, we have to work out an agreement with the Dolans to develop this driveway, is what they're telling us. And Mr. Osajic has lived next door to the Dolans for 17 years, he's had communications with them at the direction of the Planning Department, and this is not somebody that he wants to enter into an agreement with. If the board denies this, then basically what you're saying is, the town of Smithtown is going to tell my client who he has to enter into a contract with in order to develop this. And that, I think is a, makes it an invalid contract. If two people are coming together and not agreeable, and we're basically being pushed to have to deal with these people, I don't think that that's a reasonable request. The other part of the crux of this problem is, I'll call it the what-if scenarios. So if we only, if we only get approved to go out to Meadow Glen with this subdivision, the, what if the Dolans decide not to develop their property? They've had it, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, they've had it for 16, 17 years, they've done no further subdivision, we were at a meeting back in May of last year on Other Matters, and they said, oh no, you know, they came in with a plan, they showed us a plan, their plan was to Berry Hill, it wasn't to Meadow Glen. Mr. Derubies, again, said, work with these people, you know, we looked to see what they wanted to do. They still haven't submitted an application, they might never submit an application, they've talked about selling, even if they do get their subdivision, the next owners may not decide to develop it. You know, they may decide to hold on to it, and we're basically at the mercy of them in jointly developing this 600-foot driveway. Otherwise, what you're saying to us is that, you know what, this is your only option. To develop one lot, you've got to develop a 20-foot wide road, 20-foot wide driveway with a turnaround to develop your parcel, as opposed to a 220-foot long, 16-foot wide driveway. That's what you're doing, you're telling my client, who has a reasonable subdivision here, that that's his only option, and I don't, I don't think that that's a reasonable request, especially when we have a viable option, which removes less trees, which is incremental. After this, these subdivisions are done, they're done in that area, there's nothing, there's nothing else to be done. Lastly, you know, there's been questions about flag lots, as far as, you know, whether they're viable, or whether the town should approve them. Thankfully, the last handout I'm going to give you is a tax map showing some of the flag lots in the area. So that'll be my last one that I give to you here. What this is, you know, there's been questions about flag lots, in essence, we're creating a flag lot, I agree, but this area, the way that it's been developed, I have, there's two tax maps which are being submitted, the area that's immediately around the subject parcel and the property to the north. There's been several flag lots that have been developed in the area, and basically what we're asking this board is, we're saying, this is in character with the, with, you know, with the area, we're not looking to propose something that's different. Lastly, to go back to Mr. Derubies' comments. I think we've met the burden that he's asking for, the reasons why he wants to, that he wants to have this denied, he's saying, you know- He's saying, you know, there, this is a practical and feasible alternative design that is less destructive to the environment. Environmental has reviewed this application over the course of years. They've made no issues about it. The only people that have recently made an issue is the Engineering Department and I think we submitted this, yeah. I'm sorry, I misspoke. The Engineering comments are here. In this, and these are the comments, I'd like to introduce it to record, from Engineering, from Highway, from Traffic. Highway and Traffic had no issues with it. Their memos are included in here. Engineering cited sound engineering concerns. We addressed them in the design. Their main concern was that it was going to disrupt the area and it was going to remove trees and topography. This design does not substantially change topography, and it does not, it removes two trees in the right-of-way. Secondly, in Mr. Derubis's objections, that the practical and feasible alternative would permit the adjacent property from being developed. Well, I've, I've stated that the Dolans can still develop their property, they can still file a subdivision. And secondly, I've, I pointed out that we're, we are minimizing regrading, and this is consistent with the development standards of the town. I'm asking this board to please review this application as on its merits. I believe that this proposal has less of an impact, and for these reasons, we are respectfully asking for your approval. So if the board has any questions or comments at this time?
I have one question before we have the people come up. They want to, want to talk. Mr. Osidick's house is where? Point that out for the audience. That's his present residence. That's the residence that he built back when?
He, no, he bought the house, it was pre, it was existing when he bought it.
All right. So he bought that when?
He bought that in 1996.
1996?
Yes.
Okay. Now, other board members, you've got any questions before?
Yeah, just want to make sure that we have everything down as to what you want to do and the differences between what you want to do and what the Planning Department wants you to do.
Yes, I do.
Just want to make sure we have it all down.
Yes.
So his house is, his house is south, on the southern part, part of his property, right?
Yep.
He wants a subdivide, correct? To create another lot north of him on which another house will go.
Correct.
And you want to have a flag lot, his, his lot will be a flag lot, his, the lot that his house is on will be a flag lot going out to Berry Hill.
Berry Hill, yes. On the map in front of you here, what you're seeing is those two lots that you just described. To the north is the new residence. That, that blue area highlighted in blue is our proposed driveway, like a 280A application over a right-of-way. The area in the orange is where the, the present driveway exists, which is an eight-foot wide driveway. That was, that's how Mr. Osidick presently accesses his property. That's the area that Mr. Derubis is asking us to redevelop in order to create the subdivision.
The orange, the orange is an existing driveway?
The, the orange is an existing driveway off of Meadow Glen.
And where does the, where does the driveway from his house go up to the orange?
Correct. I'll show you right here.
Just show me where, just point to me. It's like, okay. It goes around his house?
It goes entirely around his house. It's a P-shaped driveway.
Connects in two places?
It connects in two places. He has to go clockwise to go into his property because he can't go up, there's that first right at the westerly edge of his property. It's too steep to go up that property, you know, to go up the driveway, especially in the wintertime, with snow and ice and other things. So he does, he does a clockwise loop. Basically, what he's saying is he wants to disconnect or remove a portion of the driveway that would traverse the newly proposed lot, and then he would disconnect, he would remove a portion of his, his access that he has to that driveway.
How does he exit his property now?
He goes out to Meadow Glen.
Goes out to Meadow Glen.
Yes.
That's what he's been doing?
He has an easement to go out to Meadow.
Since the day that he bought the property.
Since the day he bought this property.
Okay.
He's also act, he's also gone across to Wood Hollow. That driveway before Berry Hill went out to Wood Hollow.
Okay. So it's like a U-shaped driveway that comes around now?
Correct. It goes in between his, his residence and his, and his garage.
From that driveway, back around?
Correct. So the only, the only way up his driveway is on the easterly portion of his property. He's not able to go up the westerly portion of the property due to the topography.
But everything ties into Wood Hollow Road.
So Meadow Glen.
The, the yellow part or the orange part that you show, that's the way he comes in and out of his property now?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay. And that's been that way since he bought?
That's been that way since he's bought it, and, you know, he's...
On the east side, you're talking about?
I'm sorry. On the north side of the property, that orange area is where his driveway, that's his easement he has across the Dolans' property.
Right.
It was formerly the Bogies' property. They were the ones that developed Berry Hill.
But you said there was a part of it he can't use?
Because of the topography.
Where is that? So you're saying he only uses the other half of the driveway?
He uses it to enter his property. To exit his property, he can use the other side. He uses the other side to enter it.
Meaning he could drive on it one way, but he can't drive on it the other way?
What happens is the sto, the slopes are 20%. There's a portion, it was pre-existing. The slopes are 20% adjacent to his house. He doesn't go use that part in the winter. Can he use it in the summer or something? Yeah. But if, if he's limited to accessing his property from that spot, you know, he, he can't do it. He goes out the other way.
I know, I know what he does. But there's a difference between him doing it and him being unable to do it, as you say.
He would be, yes, he would be unable, correct.
He say he's able to drive on that one way only? He can only drive one way at certain times of the year?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
And that's when, that's, that's possibly if there's snow or ice?
That is correct, sir. Yes.
So how does he get out if it's snow or ice?
Well, he can get, he can get out of, he can get out of the properties, you know, if there's snow or ice. He doesn't go down that area because it's a steeper slope. Usually what he does is the other side, on the east side of the property. That's how he goes primarily in and out of his, of his, accesses his home. And that's what he's proposing with this application, is to restrict his use. That driveway leads up to the front of the house. The other one with the steep slope, it's behind his house. That's not where the, his house, the back, the back of his property, you know, faces the back of another property. The front of his house faces the east. That's his main approach up to his house.
And he bought the property?
Yes.
Knowing those particular dynamics?
He, he bought it knowing those dynamics, but for the, he also bought the property knowing that, you know, someday he would intend to subdivide. And based upon the characteristics and the topography, this is, this is the only feasible way to access his property is from the east side, not from the west side.
You mean from Berry, from Berry Hill?
From Berry Hill.
Okay.
From the driveway side.
You're going to build up the part of the driveway that exists on the east side from his house?
Yeah, probably he'll do a little, yeah, he's, yep.
And then, and then make a driveway for the new house?
Correct, that's correct.
Which will tie into that driveway?
That's correct.
That's what you propose to do.
That's correct.
And the Planning Department thinks that you should do, go the other way, out the back, add onto that orange driveway easement?
That's correct, yeah. The, the Planning Department, I think Mr. Chairman has a copy of their proposal in front of you. I've also made a, a copy of it with my comments on it.
Okay.
Excuse me?
We're, we're pretty much, we know where everything is.
I just had a question.
Sure.
At the planning board meeting that we asked if you would contact the Dolans?
Yes.
Did you ever do that, and what was the outcome?
We did contact, actually, we saw them right after the meeting, and the owner can discuss a little further. We did contact them early on at the direction of the, the Planning Department. They asked us to do due diligence and reach out and speak with them, and the, the owner did the direct contact. He also reached out to some of the neighbors. So I'll let him just speak briefly on that, and then we'll finalize.
But, but what you have to understand is...
Yes.
We don't have anything to do with negotiations between property owners, okay?
Yes.
Our job is planning.
Yes.
And we use the guidance here of the Planning Director, and then listen to everybody's side in presentation.
Yes.
Now, as I understand it, there was a meeting, and it was not fruitful for what you would like to have done. Is that correct?
No, no, not at all. The, the Planning Director asked us to attend a meeting. We, we just wanted to get to where we are today, to have this application in front of you. The Planning Director asked us to attend a meeting labeled as Other Matters for Design Review by this Board. Design, you know, have comments on the design, even in an unofficial format. So we agreed, you know, we wanted the application to move along. At that meeting, there was discussion of the rights to accessing an easement came up, and my client has rights to access Meadow Glen. It's, it's in the, the covenants and restrictions of his property. What we were concerned about was adding a second lot to that. There was a question raised by one of the board members whether, if there was going to be a problem with doing that legally, that they should just not even consider it. It was researched by the...
I think you have your opinion on that.
Excuse me, yes. And the...
It is allowed.
Yeah, the, the town attorney, excuse me, Mr. Schul, researched it and said that it was allowed. So that is certainly a factor.
But the access is still to Wood Hollow Road. It's not anyplace, right?
Meadow Glen, yeah, I'm sorry. To Meadow Glen it is, not, not Wood Hollow.
However you would get out of that other applic, however, if you just subdivided, however you wanted to get in and out of those two lots would be Wood Hollow Road.
Yeah, Wood Hollow.
By the agreement that was made originally. Is that correct?
I lost it all, I'm sorry.
Meadow Glen.
Meadow Glen.
I know Wood Hollow too, good, whatever.
Meadow Glen, yeah.
Wood Hollow is the one that comes in.
Yeah, Berry Hill leads to Wood Hollow, correct.
Yes.
So we would, our access would be limited to Berry Hill via Wood Hollow, so...
Okay. Now, we're gonna, there's some people from the audience.
Mr. Oss just wanted to make a quick comment, and then we'll go to the audience.
Okay.
Good evening. As far as communicating with my neighbor, I've done that. Six years ago, I had first proposed to do this subdivision, at which time I'd gone to my neighbor, hired an architect, got a surveyor involved, and tried to see if there was something we could work out. Six years ago, it ended up being that he decided that he didn't want to get involved. He had, from what he told me, a nightmare situation with the first subdivision, which he got done, and he wasn't looking to get his head beaten in again. So he basically backed out, says, I'm not looking to do anything else. If I can't get four lots out of this situation, I'm not interested. And I, at that time, told him, so, okay, I understand, I'm on my own. I may pursue this in the future, and I'm not sure what I'm going to do. So I decided to pursue it, and, which is what we've done in the last three years. I submitted it in '09, and it's taken about almost three years to get to this point, which is a little bit absurd in my eyes, as it is. In the last meeting, I was nowhere that Tom was even interested in doing anything. At the last meeting is when I discovered that Mr. Dolan was looking to see if he could connect to Berry Hill, because it's much more desirable. Who wouldn't want to have access to their home from a private, safe cul-de-sac as opposed to a double-yellow busy street? Anybody in their right mind would want that. So that's what he was trying to do. Supposedly, Mr. Derubis has said that he was aware that if he ever wanted to subdivide in the future, he had to go through Meadow Glen. It was an agreement, of which I have never seen anything in writing, and don't know exactly how that agreement was drafted or how it came about, but that's what I'm being told. So he was denied immediately, and Mr. Derubis suggested that I again hook up with Mr. Dolan to try and, and work out a deal to go out to Meadow Glen. I do not want to be involved with somebody else who I am at the mercy of their whim or circumstances. How could I do that? He can, he has total control over this sub, whatever I can do, he has total control, and that is not a good place to be. I have no options, and if you deny this, you are forcing me to get involved in something that I have no control over. He can sell. He can decide not to subdivide. We could have an agreement. I'm going to build a 600-foot road out to Meadow Glen for one lot? Is, is that what I'm, I'm supposed to be doing? Think about that. He, he can do a number of things. He can, he can decide not to subdivide. If he sells and the, and the new owner likes the land, doesn't want any more houses around him, he's not going to subdivide. Where does that leave me? All right, so that, that's, that's the entire...
I appreciate that. We've had two or three meetings with you, and I appreciate there the fact that you've been trying there to find a way to access your property with some different circumstances there as far as Mr. Dolan's concerned, but we have no control over that.
Okay.
The only thing that we have is planning.
Mm-hmm.
And that's done by Mr. Derubis.
Right.
He draws it up, and then he makes a recommendation, and we consider it. So now, we're at the point where we've gone through this two or three times, and we haven't been able to resolve it, and now we have an audience that wants to talk also.
Okay.
So let's hit, let the audience...
I have some more.
Let's let the audience hear.
If I could please continue for a little bit here. The, the, okay, what, what is it that you want to do now?
Well, I wanted to let the, I wanted to let the people that are here, because we've gone through this three or four times, and we've not been able to resolve it with you, okay? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this application? Would you come? Give your address, your name and address, so that we know who you are.
Thanks, folks. My name is Anthony Verga, V as in Victor, E-R-G-A. I live at number two, Berry Hill Drive. I guess...
You can take the mic.
My house is right here, okay? Right next to the cutout. To whatever extent the town has any control or jurisdiction over a right-of-way, I guess it wouldn't be an easement, I'm not an attorney, to whatever extent the town has control over a right-of-way, I would urge them to decide for the greater good or the most people who would be affected by whatever decision they make. It's of concern to me if a decision is made that would benefit one person or one company economically. That's number one. Number two is, as I pointed out, my piece of property is right in the thick of this whole issue. You can raise standing water in my backyard on any day of any week of any month of the year. There is extremely poor drainage in my backyard. This driveway, going through where it is proposed from the cutout on Berry Hill, would, I think, alter the topography significantly. In the plan, and I'm going to be finished in three minutes, in the plans, the new proposed driveway has drainage devices or architectural aspects to help control the drainage. That tells you right off the bat that there is a significant problem with water drainage in that entire area. Most driveways don't have any drainage devices. This plan, as submitted to you, has at least two of these drainage techniques to help control the drainage. I'm going to have waterfront property if this driveway goes through. The other thing, folks, is Berry Hill Drive is a very beautiful, peaceful, serene, tranquil area. I'm concerned a little bit about this driveway and this driveway. Someday may, I don't know for sure, but there is a possibility that they may be connected, and there's your through-access for somebody who wants to take a shortcut, all right? That could happen. The other thing, folks, is Mr. Osidick's driveway goes, as we pointed out, in a U-shape. I don't think the issue, I don't think the issue in front of you is how Mr. Osidick accesses his house. He's been living there 15, 16 years, and he's been getting in and out. So the issue is not how he's going to get in and out of his house. The issue is what are we, how are we going to access this new house? And, folks, there is also a proposal for some new houses here. This house, it's, it's almost logical to say that they would tie into that driveway. Do I know that? No. But that is certainly a possibility. Maintenance of the driveway could be a problem. All you have to do is look at Pitch Pine Drive off of Wood Hollow Lane. It has been a virtually abandoned. It is a mess. And speaking for myself, I would not like to have a mess next to me in, literally in my own side yard. Barbara, do you have anything you want to say about this?
I'm, I'm his wife. Part of the problem is, who owns this land? The person who is going to have the house doesn't own the land. So who's going to take care of this? Who's going to mow it? We're mowing it now and the next-door neighbors. We're not going to want to continue to mow it if it's somebody else's driveway. Another problem is, as my husband said, our house is here. Berry Hill goes out here, Wood Hollow comes down here. Where does that make our house? Our house will be surrounded on three sides by road. We moved to this area because of the trees. All of these trees back here are going to be gone. We see just beautiful, it's just beautiful, and it's going to be completely gone. What else?
Last thing, folks, last thing is, there is a... Last thing, folks, last thing is, there is a, it's, it's more than two trees are coming down. Believe me, it's more than two trees. All those little X's on your, okay? Some trees are gonna be preserved. Couple of trees that are gonna be preserved are dead. I question the planning of a project that cuts down live trees and preserves dead trees. How well is that project thought out? I'll end on that note, thank you very much.
One more. Supposedly, they can get up the driveway this way. We've been there for nine years, and I very seldom see a car going up there. I'm sure the other side is being used a lot more than it's been said. We very seldom see a car going that way, and that's gonna be, that become the main driveway, going this way.
Ma'am, can you just give your, your name and address for the court reporter?
My name is Barbara Verga, and my husband is Anthony Verga. We live at Two Berry Hill Drive. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Scro. I live at 27 Wood Hollow Lane, and basically, I live right across the street on Wood Hollow Lane from this proposed flagship lot. I've been in the construction business for over 25 years, have had leadership roles both locally at the state level, and I've reviewed this file, and I offer the following testimony. I'm also a licensed attorney. I couldn't disagree more with the characterization, characterizations made by the architect. Obviously, looking at the plan that, and I, and I support the plan that the planning staff has recommended, it's based on sound principles, it takes into consideration some of the other development, and basically eliminates the necessity of having a flag lot, which is totally out of the character of a traditional subdivision that surrounds this area. He has a viable alternative off Meadow Glen with enough frontage to serve his lots, takes into consideration the other development, and this driveway is unnecessary. And because you want to have an address on a quiet cul-de-sac...
Would you please just address us?
And have a 250-foot...
Just address us, please.
Okay. You want to have a 250-foot driveway leading to a quiet cul-de-sac. I've never seen that before, okay? I've walked this site. I'm very familiar with the topo and the number of trees that have to come down, and I'm not quite sure the environmental department has adequately reviewed this file, but I agree with the staff recommendations, recommendations made by highway and engineering. This is less disturbance on the environment coming through this way. Eliminates the necessity, the necessity of having a flag lot. I've seen the topo, I've seen the number of trees that have to come down, okay? It is gonna have a visual impact on this community. It doesn't fit within the character of this neighborhood. And basically, what you're gonna be creating here is a 250-foot driveway, where you're gonna have to clear the woods out front, because I've walked it and I've seen it, and you have a, a good-sized berm, which I say, you're gonna have to put a retaining wall in there, okay? Somewhere between four and six feet, okay? So, let's ignore the fact that now you're gonna have this driveway coming in between two houses that sit on a quiet cul-de-sac. Kids are gonna be playing, okay? And you're gonna have this 250-foot driveway coming out of the woods, okay, and through this retaining wall, okay? Let's ignore the fact that maybe kids playing next door. What you're gonna have is a driveway that is gonna lead to a dangerous condition because it's coming out of the woods, through the retaining wall, there's not a line of sight, right in the middle of a cul-de-sac. They're gonna cross the cul-de-sac diagonally across. Now, my kids are grown up, okay? You know, but the neighborhood is changing. We're gonna be talking about this down the road, and it's not gonna be a pretty circumstance, and someone's gonna be responsible for it, whether it's, whether it's the town or whether it's the architect that signed the plans, because you're having a 250-foot driveway with limited visibility through the woods, through, I think you're gonna need a retaining wall, in my professional opinion, into a middle of a cul-de-sac, okay? And somebody is gonna get hurt, and it, and it's gonna be a very sad day when that happens.
Can you, can you point out on that map where your house is in relation there to the orange road?
My, this is Berry Hill.
I know where Berry Hill is.
Right. I'm, I'm on Wood Hollow, right across from, from the Berry, Berry Hill Drive. So, I look out of my house, I look at the cul-de-sac of Berry Hill.
I got you.
Okay.
In other words, you're opposite this gentleman here on that cul-de-sac.
Right.
Am I correct?
Right.
Okay. Now, I know where you are.
Now, I spoke to all my neighbors, okay, on the cul-de-sac, and none of them are supporting this application. They, they, they agree with the planning staff on their recommendations. Also, the architect mentioned that his house faces Berry Hill. His house is here, Berry Hill's over here. This house is, proposed house is here. You're, you're 250, 300 feet away. I don't even see his house. I probably won't even see the proposed house. So, how can you sit here and say that his house is faces Berry Hill? I, I don't understand that. This creates a flag lot that's unnecessary and a dangerous condition that affects the welfare, safety of this community. I urge the board to deny this application. Thank you. SCRO.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none. Questions by the board?
Just want to ask the applicant, where the blue is. Who owns that land?
Town.
The town does. Town does. It's a right-of-way. It's a Berry Hill right-of-way extent. That's the area they were planning. This is the area they were planning on originally putting a cul-de-sac, and they had the topographic issues because it was too wide of an area, disrupt too much, so they moved the cul-de-sac back. So, this is, this is all town property. This would be...
So, it's not paved or anything?
No, it's not, it's not paved at all.
No.
It's not paved at all.
Did you do the... So, you want, so you, yeah, it was a long time ago.
You did? Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, we had two people come up and had comments. I'd just like to address their comments briefly. Mr. Verga had stated that there was gonna be drainage issues. Certainly, that's absolutely incorrect, because the engineering department has reviewed it. There's a, there's a ton of drainage at the end of the cul-de-sac there. I think there's something along the lines of, of eight storm pools, because that's the end of the cul-de-sac. In addition to that, we're adding storm drainage. It's not because there's a problem, it's because that's the law. That's, that's development standards, but the board's aware of this.
Our memo here says, "Engineering prefers the access to be located on Meadow Glen."
Yeah, they, they do. They, again, late, late hour, they've come up for no, you know, again, no reason. They've reviewed it initially just for, on standard engineering principle. They're saying, "We don't, you know, we don't want it," but they're not giving a reason as to why they don't want it. This, this late hour and this, they're saying, "Well, it's gonna be disruptive to the neighborhood." Okay, I might, we're not getting any proof of that. I'll get to the retaining wall issues again, but we're not altering the topography significantly, as Mr. Verga said. You know, it's, it's gonna create, you know, he's saying that it's gonna create significant problems. This is a, it's a driveway off of a cul-de-sac. There's, you know, I don't, traffic has looked at this. There's gonna be minimal impact on the neighborhood with these additional houses being added onto the subdivision, you know, onto the, at the end of Berry Hill. The driveways can't be connected. I still put on the record that we're not, we're, they're removing part of the driveway. There's no way that anybody's gonna be able to get from Berry Hill to Meadow Glen through my client's property. As far as, you know, mowing the grass, they're gonna have a little less grass to mow. We're gonna have a 16-foot driveway. We're not gonna affect any of the area that they're mowing. If they want, if they want us to mow it, we gotta, you know, maintain the driveway as it is. It's gonna be a private driveway. The applicant to the north, he's got 135-foot driveway. I'm sure he clears his driveway. We're gonna do the same. We're gonna clear the driveway. Trees will be gone. That's a, you know, that's a major surprise. But, you know, like, like I said, my client was in there. Several hundred trees removed when he was, after he moved in, you know? That whole area, the character, the area changed substantially, you know? He, probably over a thousand trees were removed. He, you know, that his, what was looked at for him? The character changed at the time because a new subdivision was created. And more than two trees? It's two trees. Over a certain size, eight-inch size is the envi, you know, environmental department request, that's what's been noted on the plans. Going to Mr. Scro, if I mispronounce that, I apologize. Flag lot is out of character? It, yes, it's a flag lot. It's a driveway leading up to these two homes. It's not, you know, it's not something that's gonna be out of character beyond anything else that's going on in the area. There's gonna be, you know, the visual impact on the community. I've submitted pictures to show that the impact is, is quite minimal. I'm showing how the driveway, how it's gonna affect the landscape. A retaining wall needed? If I wanted advice on a retaining wall from an attorney, I would, you know, I don't think I would go to him for advice on it. We submitted a plan that does not have retaining walls in it. The grade meets the town requirements. Lines of sight not an issue from the, the traffic department. It's a big, wide-open area. You're coming out of a driveway, a big, wide-open area. If you can't see kids playing on the street, you shouldn't be driving. The attorney's professional opinion, somebody will get hurt. I, I don't see that scenario whatsoever. You know, there's, this is a cul-de-sac, we're gonna have three driveways on a cul-de-sac. We're not creating a tremendous amount of traffic going through here. And does the house face Berry, Berry Hill? Yes. The front of the house faces, it faces east. To have a driveway come from the other direction is coming into the back. That's the only point that we're making, is that, that his house faces east, a driveway would be in his front yard, which is typical for a home. Same thing with the home we're providing. It wouldn't be in the side yard as Mr. Derubias has proposed on his plan. So, we're, we're facing that house also in the most stable topographical area on the property, which is on the eastern side. So, those are those points addressed, and if the planning board has any further questions, I'll be happy to answer them relative to these comments.
All right. Any, any further questions from the board? All right.
I'd like to know if Mr. Derubias wants to respond to any of this.
Yes, I would. There's a couple of points. One, if you're gonna speak for town departments, I think it's better that you, this board asks for an explanation rather than interpretation of what the engineering and highway department have said. Both engineering and highway could, we have a good highway department, a good engineering department, they could design anything that you want. If they could build homes on cliffs in California, we could build a road anywhere. The question is, before this board, what is the best option for the community? That's what we're trying to determine here, not whether or not it is physically feasible. I admit entirely that it's physically feasible to do a lot of things engineering-wise, and I think what the engineering department said was preferable was based upon how you design the subdivisions. They felt that the design that we submitted was a better approach towards that. That's the one. Second item, the issue of whether this gentleman is captured somehow or somehow, somehow impeded on utilizing that right-of-way was an issue that was first raised before this particular board. If you recall, and we examined that particular issue. The second thing was, was that the Dolans actually appeared at one of the meetings before this board and testified in regard to that. The issue really is before this board is not whether or not you could improve that particular easement, but who's gonna pay for it? That's really what the issue is. They could improve it, and the Dolans indicate it, they have no objections to them improving it. It's a question of what we're suggesting when they work with the Dolans is whether or not you could share the cost. If you can't share the cost and you wish to subdivide your property right now, then bear the cost, and we would work with the applicant on trying to equalize the, the physical development of that particular road, but you can widen that particular road. Last point is, if the Dolans do subdivide, which we have said before that they are intending to do, and they did testify before this public hearing, they're gonna widen that road anyway. So, any trees that are gonna come down are gonna come down anyways on that particular area. So, the widening of that particular road is going to happen because the Dolans want to develop that particular area. What we have recommended, and I will state from the beginning, we have not hid or changed our recommendation from the day this application came forth. If all of the issues that are relevant on this particular item, the fact that we reduced the cul-de-sac when Berry Hill was done, we said we didn't want the road to go through because it was a topographical issue, we could have accepted dedication of the right-of-way of the Dolans at that particular time if we wanted to, to complete the road at that time. We did not. We did not want that land, we did not want the road to go through. So, we had covered all of these issues previously when we approved this. And some of these quotes, obviously, I think the board is well aware, taken out of context and the forms of discussions on what the issues were here, but overall, we've been consistent from day one on what we recommended here. This is, goes back two years. We have said the same things over the two-year period. We have not deviated from what we have said, and those have been the same things the other departments have said. They, we prefer, and this is the professional recommendations from highway, engineering, and planning, the better design is to come off of Meadow Glen Road. That's what we're saying. It's not the only way you could do it, but that's the best way, and it'll be up to the board to balance our opinions with whatever the board determines is the appropriateness for that particular area.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, just to comment briefly, very briefly. The, you know, I understand, you know, handing in, you know, snippets out of the record could be taken out of context. That's why I'm asking this board to please review the record of what was going on before. Miss, you know, Mr. Derubias is mentioning that they didn't intend for the road to go through, but, you know, that's not in the record. It, it happened sometime after the Berry Hill subdivision occurred, and after the Dolan subdivision occurred. It's not in the record. It was, it was always intended that that road go through. So, all these questions about, you know, "Oh, yeah, this is gonna disrupt the area," and that, you know, "This is gonna be a problem," you know? People at, in the record, there was neighbors that came in on Wood Hollow that wanted the road to go through for bus access. So, I don't see it there. That's why I'm just appealing to you to please review the record and look at this in the context of that approval, and just, you know, see how this fits in with that. That's what, you know, that's what we're asking for. We don't, we can't piece it together, what happened where a road was supposed to go through, the cul-de-sac was developed with a small extension on it, and then it didn't happen. We're not doing anything that's not consistent with that. We're extending it, instead of a road, we're actually limiting it to a driveway, so there can't be any further connection or, or development of a roadway. We're asking for a simple driveway, not a road to go through. So, that's, that's all we're doing, you know? The, the issue that we have, and I understand this is a planning issue, is that development is a part of planning. If it's not feasible to develop the property on our own, then your decision is gonna have a, a direct bearing on whether my client can develop the property, which, you know, we recognize a house can, can fit there. We're, we're going to your expertise on this. We're not looking to reiterate anything that's been gone on in the past. We just want your full consideration of this. We don't feel we had that at the last two hearings. We weren't invited to the third hearing somehow, and there was discussion on this topic without us there. It wasn't a formal public hearing. This is a formal public hearing, and we'd like your, your duly, duly to consider the, the application for you. Thank you very much.
We've, you know, we've had a lot of testimony over a period there of more than two or three meetings about the same issue. And the thing that we have a problem with is, Mr. Oss bought the property, knew that what he was buying, agreed there to use the access road coming in off of Meadow Glen, and now he wants to subdivide and create a condition that was not there in his original purchase there of the property. And that's what we have a problem with.
Okay.
If the planning department there said we could work out something, that would be different, but the planning department feels that this is an issue that was addressed at the time there that Berry Hill was built, that, that the, apparently the elevation there of that property there that comes off of that cul-de-sac was such that they didn't want to continue that through.
That's, that's not in the record.
It may not be in the record, but we did it in the visual.
Yeah, I mean...
And that was the indication that we had.
We, I mean, we have topographic maps, that's a navigable, that's a navigable accessway that leads from Berry Hill to his, the edge of his property, and I agree...
But one house?
No, for two houses, certainly.
No, no, there wasn't two houses.
No, no.
When he bought that, when he bought that property, there was one house there.
Absolutely.
And that access there to that cul-de-sac would have been a driveway for one house.
Understood.
Okay?
Understood. What I'm saying is that that access didn't exist when he bought his house. I agree. Now, the opportunity is there to access it, and it's a better application to access the cul-de-sac with the driveway. That's what, that's what we're gonna do. It wasn't there, we're not saying, "Well, you know, we didn't have this opportunity before," or, you know, "We, we, we had, we had access to Meadow Glen and..." and, you know, now it's sour grapes, we have it, and, you know, we, we want to change the circumstance. The circumstance has changed because of the development of Berry Hill. That's, that's why we're seeking to get access to it. It's not that, well, we realize that that was, you know, how our property, how his property was when he bought it, that we now have access to Berry Hill, we have frontage on there. Therefore, we're seeking to provide a better application with two driveways, one for the Dolans, one for us, that will basically stop any, any potential for a road to carry through. And it'll have less of an impact because it'll be smaller roads. There won't be a 20-foot road with a turnaround. It'll be two driveways, one serving two houses, another serving three. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Anybody else? Members of the board, any comment? None?
It's been some time, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it's been some time since we've, we've visited this site. There's a lot of documents that were submitted to us
For the first time.
For the first time on, on this evening. I would like to personally revisit the site, perhaps with the planning director because of all the issues involved here, if that would be agreeable to the planning director. I don't know if,
I think also we have given a lot of paperwork to read through it and to give the applicant full consideration of all this stuff he just gave us. I think that would be important. And also, given what Mr. Ashen says, I think the issues present, presented here to go there with Mr. Derubies, I think it's a good idea.
If I can address the board while it's time. If need be, if you'd like, you know, if you want to do that and you feel you would have an additional set of questions for myself and Mr. Oscar.
We're not going to get into that off the record.
Okay. No, 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 no. What I'm saying is that if you'd like to hold the hearing open so that you can do your investigation and, you know, review the, the record, review maps, review whatever you need to do, and you want to come back with further questions for us, we'd be more than happy to leave the hearing open so that you can, we can revisit this at a later time. It's, it's up to the board, obviously.
But we're not going to, we're not going to meet with you or Mr. Ashen.
No, no, not, not me with us at another hearing.
He's saying, he'd be willing to come back again. We went out there, we had some questions we wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, no discussion.
Okay, there's been a couple of people that have indicated that they want to look at this information there before we go any further with it. The rest of the board, how do you feel?
Well, John, you know, I, I remember the property very, very clearly on Berry Hill. So, you know, I, I don't need to revisit. I saw it, I could visualize it. But I'll defer to whatever the board wants to do on adjournment for a revisit of it onsite. But again, I vividly remember this particular site.
All right.
But also myself, Mr. Chairman, I,
A what?
I also feel the same way as Mr. Yellen.
Frank, you up there to having a, a visit there with the board?
Just call, I'll be with the board anytime.
A motion then to adjourn and review this data, and then we'll get back to you. Motion to adjourn for the reasons stated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
So ordered.
Thank you.
Lost your voice?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the matters for this evening. The board would like to adjourn.
We have a, okay, the letter from, everybody's got the letter from Mr. Hilbert, okay? A motion there to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.